Hello Lou, are you still there?
I'm here.
Good evening Lou. Good evening and welcome to our Monday, December 11th Malibu Regular City Council Meeting. Lou will be calling in this evening and so everybody knows, all of our voting will be done by a roll call. So without further ado, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Lamont.
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Mayor Peak.
I'm here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Mikey Pearson, will you kindly leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kelsey, may I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 30th, 2017.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have a staff update on our FEMA agency preliminary flood maps. Rob? Oh, and just so that everybody knows, we're going to make an approval of the agenda right now and we're going to pull. We're going to continue to January 7th, item 3B7. January 10th. And we're going to pull item 3B13 off of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve.
As amended.
I will second.
All right, a roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont.
Yes.
Mayor Peak.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And just so that everybody knows, due to our Santa Ana Wind Event, Rick has been recalled for God knows how many days in a row back to the fire department, but that's why he's not here with us this evening. So, all right, now, Rob, staff update from FEMA, thank you.
Good evening Council. Tonight, I'm going to give an update on the FEMA preliminary flood maps. As everyone's aware, 2011 FEMA started the process of revising the flood maps along the coastline of Malibu. September of this year, staff hired Moffett Nickel to take a look at the data and analysis that FEMA did to create the preliminary flood maps. After that review, Moffett Nickel came back to the city and saw a number of things that that could be challenged by FEMA. And so with that, we did file an appeal. Some of the issues that were brought up were some of the, there's, there's a couple, a couple areas where the base flood elevations differ from more than 10 feet. And in those, in those cases, we're recommending additional sections to be evaluated there by FEMA so that those elevation differences aren't that much. They can probably be lowered to maybe a few feet or two. They also looked at the topographical information FEMA used to evaluate all of the base flood elevations and noticed that the data that FEMA used wasn't really consistent to what the actual beach, beach profiles are here. And so Moffett Nickel is currently doing a lot of beach profiling and topography to try to get that information and then we can send that over to FEMA so they could use that data to redo the numbers. And then lastly, they did find some calculations errors while FEMA was doing their analysis and I'll go over that. And what I did is I, as I came up with some, some maps for you, you can kind of see where, the areas where we found the issues and a part of the appeal. So this, this first slide is Sea Level Drive and Broad Beach Road. Those are the first areas. The red area here is where the area where we're going to be doing additional beach profiling and find out really what the elevations are out there and give that to FEMA. Here's an additional section that we're going to ask FEMA to, to put in there. And then lastly, we did found a calculation here, error where there's an arrow pointing to Section 11. And so FEMA will recalculate that, that base flood elevation. The next section is along Paradise Cove. And once again, the red areas are the additional analysis we'll do at the beachfront. There was another calculation error right by Paradise Cove. Next section is Malibu Road. This is the one where we have base flood elevation went up significantly. We have a base flood elevation of 31. And as you can see, the red area is where we're going to do additional analysis and get the beach profile for that area. We also have three new sections that we're going to ask FEMA to add in. Next one is Malibu Creek. And once again, here's the red area is the beach profile we'll be analyzing and providing that data. Here's an additional section right by Malibu Creek that we're going to ask them to do. And lastly, here, we have the section on Big Rock. And once again, the red area is the beach profile. Two additional sections that we're going to ask them to do. And then there's another calculation error that we found towards, towards the east end of the, of the city limits. And so like I mentioned before, Moffett Nickel is gathering all its data so we can supply it to FEMA and so they could finish up their analysis and look at our appeal. With that, if Council has any questions, I'm, I'm here.
Lou, did you have any questions for Rob?
No, I'm watching it. It's interesting and I knew, I think we should continue, obviously.
All right. Laura or Jay? No? Rob, thank you for the continued work on that. We look forward to getting that straightened out. Even get applause on that one. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite up Sergeant Frey Lupien and deputies Francisco Espinoza and Keegan Lin to accept an accommodation. And I'll be coming down to the podium to read that. Copy. You guys are going to know who these are for. Whereas on November 29th, for those of you that don't know, we had a very serious car accident in Malibu. And this is referencing that event. So, "On November 29th, Deputy Francisco Espinoza received a notice of a stolen vehicle traveling eastbound on Pacific Coast Highway and waited for backup before initiating a felony traffic stop. After Sergeant Frey Lupien and Deputy Keegan Lin arrived at Deputy Espinoza's location, Deputy Espinoza initiated a vehicle pursuit. The suspect stopped to allow a passenger to exit the vehicle and sped away eastbound in a reckless manner, failing to stop at a red light, at which time Sergeant Lupien ordered the pursuit to be terminated. Deputy Espinoza soon noticed a cloud of smoke in the direction where the vehicle was traveling, drove towards the location of smoke and discovered the suspect was involved in a multi-vehicle collision and the suspect's car was on fire. Sergeant Lupien and deputies Espinoza and Lynn approached the suspect's burning vehicle and saw the suspect was injured and trapped inside. They shattered the driver's window, cut the suspect's seatbelt, and rescued him from the burning vehicle. Now therefore be it resolved, Malibu City Council commend Sergeant Lupien and deputies Espinoza and Lynn for their responsible judgment in terminating the high-speed chase and the, and the quick actions that saved a man from a burning vehicle and thank them for their efforts to ensure the safety of the Malibu community." So in here. This one is for you, Mr. Espinoza. Thank you very much. And this one is, actually, they all read the same. So there you go. Anyways, thank you guys very much. I don't know if you guys have any words, but I know that our community is very thankful for your service here every day. As well as the rest of the county. And I don't know if, if you guys wanted to say something. Okay. We really appreciate it.
I'd just like to say thank you. I know an innocent man lost his life, but many more could have. And I think just what you both do every day and our other sheriff here, all of you, we're so thankful for. And I know I speak for the entire community when I say that. And you really put yourself out there and, and all's well that ends well, at least with him. But still sad about the other loss of life for an innocent man, but thank you.
I think we all in this city know that PCH is very dangerous and just want to encourage everyone to drive safely and not stare at their cell phones. So, and whenever there's a pursuit, just get out of the way as best as you can. This time, we have public comment and we're going to start with Richard Soul followed by Sean Weber. Richard.
Good evening Mayor, fellow council members. City Attorney Kristi Hogan, who I haven't seen in a few years. My name is Richard Soul. I'm a local architect, local resident, and local property owner. I have observed the city operations and I've concluded that there are a lot, there's a lot of duplication and inefficiencies in the entitlement process surrounding the development in the Malibu community. I've observed it for a long time and I want to give you a little quick history of how I've come to that conclusion. Prior to the Coastal Act in 1976, Malibu was an unincorporated territory governed by the County of Los Angeles. And the permitting processes were all done in the branch office right here in the Civic Center. After the Coastal Act in '76, which I think was a watershed moment, the state was introduced in the process of the entitlement process, but it wasn't so bad for three reasons. The coastal permit fees were only $200. And number two, it allowed you to simultaneously submit your construction permit application to the county along with your application to the state. And the other reason was that if you were efficient and put together a supplemental package, from the time you submitted it to the time you had a hearing, I could work it out to be six weeks. I could efficiently work out the turnaround with the State Coastal Commission in the late 70s and early 80s in six weeks. The next watershed moment was when Malibu incorporated in the early 90s. And it basically supplanted the duties and obligations of the LA County Building Department for, for the city's own building department. So there wasn't much of a change, except the next watershed, which brings us to the current time, is that Malibu was forced to adopt the LCP that was authored by the State Coastal Commission. And, and in so doing, it created, it replicated the process by which the coastal permit process was, was twofold and in, and linear. And what I mean by that is that it was acting as if the state up in Northern California was processing the planning approval when in fact it was an in-house application. It was duplicative and it should have, the LCP should have been treated as another zoning ordinance that was integrated. I will give Malibu the benefit of the doubt because it was an entry-level city in the early 90s. But now we're nine, we're over 20 years later and we're still treating the planning process for CDP as if it was being governed by another agency, a state agency. I'm here to tell you that I'm going to take this message to the Planning Commission and subsequent to that, I'm going to take it to the city attorney and the city manager. But I'm giving you a preview as fellow Malibu citizens that I think when you hear this coming up in the future, and I hope you do, that we can do a better job of not contributing to this duplication of process. The entitlement process is just too expensive, mostly in time, but also it adds tens of thousands of dollars to the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Soul. Sean? And Sean, I think, I know that you wanted to speak on 3A2, but that item has already been heard so it cannot be pulled per the agenda in terms of that, but go ahead and you have your three minutes so we put you on it regular comment. Go for it. On consent, yeah. There's just a note on here that says that.
Will you explain that to me one more time?
We haven't, we haven't taken action on 3A2, so go ahead and make your comments. It's before we've done it. So we're good.
It's before, right? Okay.
You know, the, just as long as I have the floor, good evening Council. When we adopt an ordinance, we do it in two phases. We have the public hearing where we introduce it and that is a time where people give input and then a decision's made on whether or not to introduce it. And then it goes on consent for adoption and the council can't make any changes in it. But you might be able to persuade them to take it off and not take the action at all. So this is your chance.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still learning how all this works. So I'm new at this, so I'm trying to get better at this. But, so I'll, I'll speed through this. I have three minutes, correct? Okay. Start. Okay. "This ordinance that you're proposing to adopt tonight is illegal. The ordinance is inconsistent with the city's local coastal program. Contrary to the council's assertion tonight, adopting this ordinance constitutes a violation of SEQA. The California Coastal Commission concurs. Critically, the city failed to analyze projects' alternatives, including alternatives that would actually free up daytime parking for the public, the city's ostensible goal. These alternatives include removing numerous unauthorized yellow zones along PCH, reviewing and reducing fire hydrant clearances, eliminating and shortening unnecessary red zones, and reviewing curb cuts. The city has failed to make any findings that the ordinance is required for public safety. In fact, I have previously demonstrated the adoption of this ordinance tonight poses a real and significant threat to public safety. The city will never be able to implement this ordinance because the city does not qualify for the requisite coastal development permit to install the signage to enable enforcement of this restriction. As I and the California Coastal Commission have previously explained to this body numerous times, this ordinance and the failed CDP that preceded it is inconsistent with the city's local coastal program. As the Coastal Commission has stated, any future decision by the city on the necessary coastal development permit to implement the parking restrictions will lack factual and legal support for finding consistency with the certified Malibu LCP. In other words, any attempt of the city to actually implement this imprudent parking restriction will fail and be subject to the city to costly litigation. The city lacks authorization for the proposed restriction from Caltrans, the agency that is responsible for maintaining the operation on, for maintaining and operating PCH. The ordinance has failed the coastal development permit that, that you attempted to adopt previously or thinly veiled attempt to target one local business, the Malibu Surf Shack, that happens to be a competitor, competitor of the current council member. That council member was also a former owner of the Malibu Surf Shack. The immense expenditure of the city's resources being wasted fulfilling one council member's personal vendetta is astonishing. I encourage everyone watching or listening tonight to read the California Coastal Commission's staff report on the hearing they're holding this Thursday to invalidate the city's shameful attempt to adopt this coastal development permit without the proper findings. The document can be located on the Coastal Commission's website. Per the California Coastal Commission, the convention hereby denies the coastal development permit for the proposed development on the grounds that the development will not conform with the policies of the city of Malibu." with the policies of the city of Malibu's LCP or the public access and recreation policies of Chapter III of the Coastal, of the Coastal Act. Approval of the permit would not comply with the California Environmental Quality Act because there are feasible mitigation measures and alternatives that would substantially lessen the significant adverse impact on development. Oh, sorry. Impacts of the development on the environment. The zoning ordinance revision code enforcement subcommittee agenda report dating April 26, 2017, according to the California Coastal Commission staff, brought no parking limitations regardless of the time of day would be an impediment to the public access, and as a result would be a conflict in the LCP's public access policy. Malibu city staff believes the enforcement efficiency gained by the prohibition method outweighs the public access benefit. The California Coastal Commission's.
Sean, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna actually pull this item on consent, so we can say part of this again. So it's my fault, because I thought that you had a public comment slip, but you put it in for 3A2. So it's my fault, I just read the note on here wrong. So we're gonna come back to this in a second.
Did I, did I fill something wrong?
No, you did not. It's totally my fault, 100%.
Okay. Oh, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm trying to get along with everybody here, but I keep coming back. So I'm trying to figure this out. So anyway, it's a process, so apologies. But thank you for letting me speak. I do appreciate it, so, you know. But again, I'll go. I know I gotta go, but anyway. But I still like to talk to everybody trying to resolve this thing, so that's what they like to do.
I'm gonna call you back up in a couple minutes.
Oh, I'm coming back up? Can you do this again?
Not the whole thing. Okay, you can be done with it. It's totally fine. Riva, city manager update.
Hi, good evening. A few things this evening. I'd like to thank all of our officers who were involved in assisting with the accident on November 29th. I know it was difficult for everybody involved, and, you know, our thoughts are with the family of the man who was an innocent victim. But I'm very proud of our law enforcement and the services that they provided, not only that day, but every day. I'd like to recognize and thank not only Mayor Protem Mullen, who I believe has worked every single day for several weeks during the red flag conditions, but also to thank two of our public safety commissioners who were deployed to assist in the fires. Commissioner Chris Hansen and Commissioner Chris Frost have been working the fires as well. So appreciated, appreciate what they're doing for not only our community, but the other communities that are affected. I'd like to recognize a few members of my staff who really went above and beyond what we needed last week to make sure that our community knew what was going on in Malibu and with fires that could have threatened our community. My staff is on call 24 hours a day during red flag conditions to respond. So our public safety manager, Susan Duñez, and my media information officer, Matt Meyerhoff, and our executive assistant, Mary Linden, who have been really just tremendous in getting information out to our community. And for those of you who are not already signed up for the city's emergency notifications, you can go on the city's website and sign up for emergency information. If there is a fire, if the city is threatened, that information will be communicated out through our emergency notification system. And then we also have the ability to call people directly, and we can filter that either by area or by the whole city if there are mandatory evacuations. So I just want to make sure that people are using those resources. You can also sign up for NICSOL alerts and get those as well. On a happier note, we're having our holiday open house this Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 here at City Hall. So we'll have a collection of toys and raffle for, with a lot of really fabulous raffle gifts given by different organizations from the city, and different businesses and restaurants. And then finally, I wanted to let everybody know that we're going to be having a special city council meeting on December 20th. That's next Wednesday. We'll be adjourning this meeting to that meeting. We did get the Luskin Report to, which gives us some more information on the options to join the CCA. And due to the timing and deadline imposed by the county, which is the end of this year, we felt it was necessary to call a meeting so that we could present all that information to the city council. So we will be adjourning to a special meeting on Wednesday, December 20th. We'll have closed session at 5:00, and the regular meeting in this room at 6:30. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Riva. Lou, did you want to start with comments?
Sure. The first thing I want to say is, just so you know, I'm about 10 seconds off from the I happen to be at City Hall the day of the fire, the most difficult, the first day. And I just have to tell you that our city manager and our staff are just absolutely excellent. And we have, in Los Angeles County, the best sheriff and fire department in California. And I just want to start off with that. As far as what I've been doing today, I am in Washington, and we're meeting with members of Congress and the departments, and I'll tell you who in just a second. But basically, I'm here with a contingent of about 20 people, council members from all over Los Angeles County and Orange County, to discuss the sober living reforms that we're trying to get done. And today, we met with Representative Ross LaHaden from Miami, Florida, Representative Stewart from Salt Lake City, Representative Cardenas, Representative Luke Correa from Santa Ana, Representative Rosen. And then we broke off into two groups, and one group went to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, met with the Assistant Secretary for Community Planning and Development, and the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Intergovernmental Relationships. And the rest of us met with members of Senator Elizabeth Warren's staff. And then we met with Representative Delora from Connecticut, Maxine Waters' staff, Al Lowenthal from Long Beach, Representative Gosa, and then we just spent an hour with Senator Diane Feinstein. So it was a very, very busy day, and the message that we're bringing is new to a lot of them, and very, very interesting. They are, they actually see what we're talking about, and they're looking at it from a different perspective than they ever have before. Tomorrow, we have another full day of meetings, and then we're coming back tomorrow night. So that's what I've been doing today. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou, Laura.
Welcome, everybody. I want to say hi to Rick, if you're able to watch this and you're not deployed up at Station 72. Thank you for all of your work and your fellow firefighters. We are so beholden to you, and just everyone has been doing a great job. And I think the whole community, we feel so much safer knowing how great our local county firefighters are, as well as our LA County Sheriff's Department. So I know I feel a lot safer, and I know the, the small fire that happened in Malibu Park was just called in quickly and put out very quickly, and everyone was very thankful about that. So we know we're in good hands. So thank you, Rick, if you're watching. Just, I just wanted to say what Riva was saying about the CCA. A CCA is a community choice aggregate, so it's looking at, looking at changing the way we get power. It would, and how our relationship with Edison, and it would be, we discussed this once, really looking at whether we want to join LA County and getting our power from different, more renewable sources than the only choice we have right now, which is with Edison. And I'm not gonna go into it too much, but you can either watch us next week or come to the meeting and learn more. I have a, just a few things. Very quickly, I was at a League of California Cities Retreat last, two weeks ago. I'm going to be the chair of the Environmental Quality Policy Committee for the League. And so all the league chairs and co-chairs and leadership met for a retreat up at Santa Cruz, and we went through what our goals are for the year and the priorities for the League. So you'll be learning more about that. Our first meeting is in January, and the League's going to be looking, really spending a lot of time, their priorities this year is looking at local control, making sure we keep the transportation tax, homelessness, and housing, and a few other things. I also had a council of governments meeting. Riva and I went to that, a COG meeting. And I also went to my SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, meeting where my environmental and energy committee had a report on adaptation measures we need for climate change, and specifically certain issues along the coast, too. And I just wanted to put out there, because I actually know a few people in Malibu, that I learned at SCAG, the AQMD, which is our air quality district. If you go to their website, you can now, there's money available if you want to swap out an old polluting car. If you have an older car that doesn't do too well and is polluting, they're now giving, the grants are up to $9,500. So if you know anyone that would benefit from that, they've upped the money, and they're trying to get the word out more. So I wanted to also thank Riva. Riva's been literally working 24/7 also, and it makes me feel a lot better knowing that she's immediately on it whenever anything happens and is in constant contact with the sheriff and the fire. But I also wanted to shout out to Susan and Matt and Mary, because I know how much extra work you've all been putting in. And I also wanted to thank Hans Lights at KBUU, and I know that the city, which is 99.1 now, and I know that Matt's been working very closely with him, and, you know, Hans has been getting out a lot of the word, and so when they're coordinating together, it's really been a good relationship, and people have been getting a lot of information. So I wanted to thank you also, Hans. I wanted to say congratulations to Claudia Lane, who's a junior at Malibu High School. She won the Foot Locker National Championship Cross Country Race this past weekend, for the second year in a row. She's really a superstar. And then a few other things. I wanted also to remind you to sign up for emergency alerts. And then, because we're not gonna be meeting, except for next week, but we're not gonna be meeting until then January 10th, there is, again, there'll be Christmas tree recycling after the holidays, and then we're going to have half-days here at City Hall on the 22nd and the 29th. And then I wanted to give you three, a few ways to help people that have been affected by the fires. The first one is a person, the college counselor at Malibu High School, Lynn Nguyen, but that's not how you spell her name, but she and her husband have a seven-month-old baby, and they were totally burned out of their home. So they basically left with nothing. And so there's a GoFundMe account, but there's also a PayPal account. And you can go to paypal.me/linhmorgan. So it's L-I-N-H-M-O-R-G-A-N, and you can make a donation directly there, and she gets a lot, she'll get more of the money there. And then also, from Linda, and you can also go to the AMP's Facebook page if you weren't able to get that down. From Linda Parks, who's a Ventura County supervisor, she told me that there's the Ventura County Community Disaster Relief Fund, which is vccf.org. And they're really the best to decide who needs what and where it's most needed, so you can make donations there. And again, that's vccf.org. And then Senator Henry Stern has been working with different animal and horse organizations, and actually brought up many, many truckloads of hay and other materials up to Ventura County. So you can also, if you want to contact me, I can get you some of that information, too. Or you can also follow Henry Stern on Facebook. He has a lot of it on there, too. And I also wanted to say that the, the group that the, a nonprofit that the city staff is working with is called Hope in a Suitcase. You know, this time of year, the city staff does a big project to help a nonprofit, and they pack suitcases for foster children. And it's around $100 a suitcase, and the staff has already raised around $500, and they got a $750 donation from SWS, and they will be stuffing the suitcases next week. So if anyone would like to make a donation to that, it's a very, very worthy organization, Hope in a Suitcase. And I want to thank our staff for doing that, picking an organization again. And I think I agree with you, Richard, and I think that's all. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Laura Jefferson.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Skylar. Real quick, I attended the Straws event with Skylar on the future that we see for implementing bans on various forms of plastics, and how the plastics change, and the frustration that administrators have because you address one piece of plastic, and then it comes back in another form and another chemical compound, and that's why a lot of the recycling is incomplete and insufficient. So we will follow up on that in the future. It was a great event. We did have a full house, and it was well-received, and I thank everybody that attended, and I hope you were all informed. On the disaster issues that, you know, complicate city government, I received many phone calls and emails by frustrated constituents that voiced their frustration in different forms. I appreciate those efforts, telling us how to do things, but what I like is examples. And so I asked several people, and I'm television, Channel 4, I found out what they do in Santa Barbara. I shared it with Matt and with the city manager, Riva. So I look forward to possibly implementing something that other municipalities do as far as early warning systems and alerts. It's a pretty convenient system. I showed it to Riva and to Matt, and hopefully we can satisfy some of the concerns from many of you that emailed and phoned during the fire events of the last week. I hope that answers your questions and your frustrations. We are looking to do something about those frustrations, and I will share this with anybody that calls me or emails me. Thank you, Skylar. Thank you, Laura.
All right. Well, like Laura said, super, super grateful. I think everyone in this community was grateful that the fire in Malibu Park was extinguished very rapidly. Just along those lines, today I toured the EOC with Senator Henry Stern in Ventura at the fairgrounds. And just want to encourage everyone in this community to be really prepared for a fire year-round. I think that that was sort of one of the concepts that the gentlemen from CAL FIRE were discussing, that, you know, never did they think that in December they would be fighting this kind of a fire in that area. And that's all kind of becoming the norm for us. Personally, right now, my family is under mandatory evacuation, and another residence that we have in Montecito and have been for the last, I think, three days now. And it was, I left there before coming right here, and watching the flames come down the hill about 1,000 feet from the house was kind of unique. And just being prepared for that, I think, is something that's really important. And we were fortunate enough to be in a prepared state where we were able to get things out of the house with plenty of time. Had that come at 2:00 in the morning like it did for the people in Ventura, I don't think that we would have been that fortunate. So I think that our staff here has done a very good job of getting that information out, and I can encourage residents more than just to be prepared with their families with a plan, or whatever that is, because it happens at times when you're not always expecting it, and you're not as fortunate as we were. And God willing, the firemen will have good luck this evening. So we'll find that out in the next 48 hours. On the 29th, I attended the Homeless Connect Day at the library and spent a number of hours down there, was encouraged by the amount of resources, and was kind of surprised at the, the lack of the amount of homeless people there, I guess I would say. But I think that people that were there really found that the resources were there to help them, and I think they found them very, very useful. Also, as Jefferson said, I attended the Straws film here, which I look forward to having something back from staff hopefully in the first quarter of 2018 on a Straws-related item, so that we can encourage the use of non-plastic straws in our city. Also, on December 4th, hosted a, with our public safety manager and Riva, and our sheriff's department, a meeting of different members of the community that deal with homelessness. And I thought that that was positive, and we're gonna have another meeting in the end of Jan, January. And if you'd like to be a part of that, feel free to contact Susan Duñez. And also, I just, I really encourage, you know, people to continue to be compassionate for all of those in our community. And I don't think that our staff or anyone else treats anyone differently, and I want to be very clear about that. And going along with what Laura was mentioning, one of our fire captains here in our community, who's a lifeguard, his name's Kyle Power, he and his family lost their home in Ventura in the middle of the night, and there's another GoFundMe account that's set up for that. The URL for that is gofundme.com/help-kk-recover-from-loss-of-home. that is gofundme.com/help-kk-recover-from-from-loss-of-home. Kyle was a friend of mine when I worked in the fire department for nine years. And he's one of the best lifeguard captains that we have in the whole entire department. So it was very sad to hear about that. But more importantly, him and his wife and baby are okay. So that's the main part of that. And without further ado, we're going to move on. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot to add one thing. I just want everyone, with these conditions, it's really important to be prepared for any emergency. And the next round of Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT classes, is starting on Thursday, January 11th at 6:00 PM at Malibu City Hall. And so these volunteers are trained in first aid, search and rescue, fire suppression and more. And they provide crucial, excuse me, assistance during disasters. And there's more information on our website under CERT. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Riva?
Hi. Yes, I did want to add two things. One, I had a message from Chief Anthony Williams with the fire department. And he wanted me to pass on that one of the reasons they were able to get such a quick handle on the fire off of Horizon last week was due to the excellent brush clearance that had been done by those properties. And that he wanted to make sure that everybody heard that loud and clear and that that made the difference of that fire being extinguished quickly with no structures lost. And that everyone needs to do their brush clearance. So I told him that I would certainly pass that on. Very appreciative of that. And then unfortunately, also wanted to add that we did have Steve Mimiyaga, who is our construction manager for the wastewater treatment facility project, who is like staff here for us because of the nature of that project. And he and his family also lost their home in Ventura. And city staff is doing a collection for them as well. So just wanted to add that to the list. And thank you.
And, you know, I know that there's probably a lot of people in Santa Barbara as the fire goes west that are going to be looking for places to stay. I know that there was, my sister has a property in Ventura and it was immediately rented by firemen, you know. So the people are looking for places to stay. And a lot of people from Santa Barbara are coming down here because the air quality up there is god-awful right now. And it's probably likely to stay like that for the next week or longer. Thankfully, though, the wind is still. But when the wind is still, the smoke just sits there. So hopefully the fire won't spread as fast or as rapidly. But the challenge with that becomes the smoke. So if you know someone up there, you know, offer to take them in for a little bit. That would be very kind.
I'd like my sister to go.
And, all right, so now we have no subcommittee reports. And, okay, so we've got a couple items to pull here. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, pulling 3A2, 3B4, 3B10. And as we stated earlier, 3B7 is continued to January 10th. And 3B13 is going to be pulled off of consent to change the recommendation.
Dad, I'm just going to pull 3B9 for a quick time.
And 3B9 and not?
3B15 is too long tonight.
Okay. And 3B9. So again, just to repeat that, 3A2, 3B4, 3B10, and 3B9. I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we're going to start with 3A2. And Sean, just, I kind of procedurally went out of order there. I know that we definitely heard all of your comments that are up here. I didn't know if you had anything to add to that. But I was going to give you another 30 seconds if you'd like, if you needed to add anything.
Sure.
Okay.
So I guess, so I guess I'll just make this a statement as a heartfelt statement. I love this city. I love my community and I love what I do. And I guess the biggest frustrating factor that I have here is that somehow I've become under fire. And I'm trying to get along with the city. I bring people in. I, my business is basically based on the community and for tourists and public that come here that I serve. And somehow I've gotten involved with all this thing. And I don't know how I got here. But I continually tried to reach out and tried to do something to stop this. So again, I guess what I'd like to say, I'd actually meet with every, am I done? Oh, no, sorry. I-
Just wrap it up.
Okay, anyway, you know, I like to solve this. I'd like to meet with people and just resolve this issue rather than going down this path. You know, obviously, I personally this means something to me. But with that being said, I guess I'll just wrap it up with that. And then just for Riva, this thing that's happening on Thursday, I mean, I'd like to be a part of stuff like that, to be able to donate if other businesses are doing it. I was never given an opportunity, but I'd like to be able to do stuff for things like that. So just throwing out there, just on some up here, so.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Do we need to conduct a second reading?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second, to approve the adoption of ordinance 427 in the second reading.
I'll second that. And I have one comment, which was just in regards to what Sean referenced and brought up. There was a lot of questions as to the legality and the sequel-related stuff. And I don't think that those have much merit, but I could be wrong. And I just wanted to hear your comment on that.
Only to say that those are issues that we discussed at the hearing. And you took that into account. And the, you know, staff will be bringing back to you a CDP when we put in the actual development, which consists of the signs themselves.
Jefferson, did you have something to add?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remind the appellant that I recuse myself from the meeting, which had the direct impact, which he felt. I recuse myself. I also want to reiterate to everybody in the public and anybody watching this, including our city attorney, this whole process started when I was not on Malibu City Council. So some of the statements this evening are incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. So we're going to have a roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're now at 3B4. Professional Services Agreement with Bright View. And I believe Jesse from our community department is up.
Good evening, Mayor Peak, members of city council. The current, the report in front of you details that our current three-year agreement with Bright View, which was entered into on April 1st, 2014, and covers the city, the city's landscape maintenance services for parks, facilities and medians. As you know, on June 27, 2016, the city banned the use of pesticides, herbicides and trapping at city properties, on city properties. So with that, Bright View worked with us back in 2016 to continue working under the contract, even though it significantly changed the scope of work. It was required by the contract because without the use of pesticides, it requires, in many cases, double or more the amount of person power that's required to take care of parks. So we've extended the amendment a couple of times in 2017, hoping that we could bring back a new contract along with the earth-friendly management policy, because they're so entwined with each other. And we wanted you to see that with the earth-friendly management policy and our contractors that handle landscape maintenance services, what the correspondence is there. The earth-friendly management policy is still under review. So we, to be fair to Bright View, considering we've extended the amendment twice already, we worked with them to negotiate the terms of a one-year agreement so that it would handle the city's needs, fairly compensate them for the additional work that's required since stopping the use of pesticides, herbicides and trapping. And then to provide us with additional time to ensure that the earth-friendly management policy is completed correctly and thoroughly. So as I said, we come to terms on that agreement, which is three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars and nine-hundred-and-forty cents for the year. And that's a significant increase. And I want to note that the reason for those increases are that we will have nearly doubled the average amount of staff on-site each day as what we currently have. And we're struggling to keep up, as you know, with weeds and the heavy rain that we received over the winter. The other part with that is that during that three years, plus the additional extension of time, labor costs have increased 25% during that time for them. So per city council policy, any appropriation over the amount of $10,000 has to go to the administration and finance subcommittee. We took that to A&amp;F on November 27th, and they approved the additional funding for the contract. So also, I have Andrew Sanders and Scott Godfrey here from Bright View, if you have any additional questions that I might not be able to answer about the agreement. So with that, happy to answer anything you have.
Thank you, Jesse. We do have one public speaker. So Ryan?
Anna Fly?
It sounds like the scope of work has changed dramatically. And this contract should probably be going out for a rebid. If it does take twice as many man-hours, it's really, or person-hours. It takes on a whole new component of how the labor service becomes a bulk of the contract and administering that and so forth. But it's a completely different animal, and it's not likely to change. So this really should be going out for rebid. Continually extending it is probably not a good financial practice of the city. It's been done a few times already. But I just want to make sure we're not ingratiating one contractor with no-bid work when the whole scope of services has changed.
Thank you, Ryan. Lou, did you have any questions for staff?
No, my understanding is that this process isn't quite complete yet. Is that true?
I think that what's not quite complete yet is the integrated pest management policy hasn't been finalized yet. And then at the time when that's finalized, that will be reviewed with whoever the current landscape contractor is at that time. But at this point, that's getting finalized. Is that correct, Jesse?
One thing I want to add to Mr. Embry's point is that we did actually solicit an RFP a year ago. And we ended up having, I think it was seven total bids that came back. I don't know, and Christie, stop me if I'm wrong, if I can talk too much about the detail and what we received back. But we actually interviewed three and had worked with Bright View and, how do I say this, had, would like to continue working with them. But with that RFP process happening, we wanted to make sure that the earth-friendly management policy was in place before we did a long-term contract. So Mr. Embry does bring up a good point. We did actually do an RFP. And will move forward with that process once the earth-friendly management policy is-
And at the time when the RFP happened a year ago for that section of that work, Bright View was the selected contractor at that time, correct?
That is correct.
I think I remember that.
And I don't mean to stutter around. I just wasn't sure what I could comment on. But that is correct. That is who we look to move forward with. And to note, we have worked with them on their cost that they had given us for a three-year contract and have been able to work with them to say what the city can do without and do with to try and get the price down. So they have been gracious enough to work with us on that. And that's why we're here.
All right, did anybody, Laura?
I just, I appreciate your comments, Ryan. And I think that that's something that we should look at. I agree with Jesse when we have the new management, the integrated pest management altogether. And I think that we want to get going on this for this year. So I'll move the item to authorize the city manager for the one-year contract, for a hundred, to negotiate for January through December.
I'd like to have discussion.
You want to second that?
Well, no, I won't. I'll let you second it.
Okay, I'll second it. Go ahead.
So now in discussion, a number of people have contacted me about some of the situations at the park, including the saltwater intrusions and some of the other implications that have happened under the purview of Bright View.
You're referencing Legacy Park, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so maybe we could have one of the gentlemen speak to it very briefly about the deficiencies in the park while it was under Bright View's, you know, use.
You mean while they were taking care of the maintenance at the park?
Yeah.
Okay. I forget, sorry, what were your gentleman's names again?
My name's Scott Godfrey.
Scott Godfrey. And I think Scott's from Bright View. But I think he's probably going to want to be a little bit more specific. You're going to come up to this mic right here?
No worries. My name's Scott Godfrey. I'm the Vice President General Manager for the North LA Branch or Region, Bright View Landscape Services. To speak specifically about the saltwater intrusion issue that came up, that was absolutely nothing that had to do anything with our contract. That was to do with the way in which the Legacy Park was actually engineered. The creek actually pushed back and allowed the saltwater to intrude back into the holding area rather than holding it out. So that was a, from what I'm understanding, an engineering issue, nothing to do with the landscape maintenance.
I believe that that's been corrected at this time.
Correct, yeah. So that was nothing to do with us.
Can I jump in?
Thank you for clar-
Councilmember, the staff brought back an item, I think it was at the last meeting, that we rejected all of the bids. We had put out a bid to have someone look at the soils at Legacy Park and the landscaping. And we rejected all of those bids. And we're in the process of issuing a new bid to have someone come in and do a complete assessment and provide recommendations on how we can correct the current soil situation. One of the issues is, as this gentleman mentioned, that has been corrected. But there is also an issue with the liner under the pond. And so we're looking at changing out some of the landscaping. So that will all be happening as well.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm sure people that are watching will understand that. And then the last question I had was mentioned by several people, was the fact that there were still some plastic containers around some of the 10 and 20-gallon plants that were installed in the park. Was that your contract as well? Or is that something I've overlooked? Or maybe you could address it, because I've actually been out there and saw a few of them.
Yeah, the plastic cans, you know what? I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to get with Guillermo and Drew. Guillermo's on our side, Drew's on your side, to make sure and see what we can do about those. I just don't know the answer to that one off the top of my head. I can get back to you with that.
So Jefferson, so you're just referencing a couple of plants that are planted in the soil, but they're still in their plastic container?
That's correct. Plastic containers.
Plastic containers, sometimes if you go out and you see them, that the top inch or two was shaved off, but that the liner is still there if you just move the dirt away with your hand.
Jesse, will you just follow up on that, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right.
As well as Trankas Park, which is right in front of our dog park.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Godfrey.
Yeah, absolutely.
And thank you for your services. And I know that people enjoy our parks. So we'll try to keep them that way.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Motion carries.
Jesse, on a side note, when are we going to get the IPM policy back?
It's a great question. I don't have the date right off the top of my head. I know it's worked between a couple of departments right now. But I believe, we hope to have something back to you in the first quarter of next year.
Thank you. 3B9, which is, did anybody, was there any public comment on 3B9? Nope? Okay, Bonnie?
Hi.
Okay. Did you want to just ask her the question? Or did you want to hear from her first?
Thanks, Bonnie. So after reading what's in the presentation here this evening, did we neglect to include a lot of work that was performed by a local member of the community, Lynn Norton? Was that overlooked in the 2008 to 2012 analysis? Does anybody remember all the work that she performed that the city received? Because we're looking at a contract here with Joyce that's not considerable, but it needs to be looked at. And I just hope all the information was gathered during that, over that program has not been discarded.
So the, no, nothing, none of the work that has been performed on the housing element has been discarded. What Joyce is doing is basically completing the process, closing the loop on everything that's been done. The housing element has been certified, but the final step is to incorporate that into our local coastal program. And so Joyce is working with staff and the Coastal Commission to get that submittal completed so that the Coastal Commission can consider the LCP amendments that would then be the implementing mechanism for the housing element.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're now at 3B10. We have a couple of different public comments. And I believe that, Riva, I guess we can, did you want to give a short presentation on it or just go straight to the public comment?
Just a quick-
All right, Ryan. Oh, sorry, no, Una. Is Una here? Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. As you all know, on September 11th, you all voted to develop the Bluffs Park open space. Many of your constituents- Many of your constituents have pleaded with you to keep Bluffs Park open space as is for all the reasons we've discussed. It's now three months later and we don't have a notice of preparation of an EIR sent to interested parties or a scoping session date announced, as far as I know. We've heard various accounts of what's happening. One account is the EIR is well underway. And public input on what should be studied in the EIR is being bypassed. There are many people in Malibu who are concerned about this. This evening's staff report seems to confirm this fact since it states, quote, "Michael Baker International is already under contract to complete the EIR," unquote. This leads me to conclude that much of the work on the EIR has already been done by the consultant without any public input. We'd like to know if this is accurate. Will there not be a scoping session? And is the public being excluded from participating in the sequo process? I'd appreciate it if you would please ask staff this evening to explain to us what work has been done to date, what is to be done in the future, so those who elected you know whether or not they have been excluded from the sequo process. Obviously, we also feel it's critical that we, as your constituents, have meaningful input in these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Una.
I, too, recall and attended the meeting where you discussed the initial funding for this project. It was somewhere low to mid $200,000 range for this EIR. And the council deliberated quite specifically on that because they didn't want a runaway project that was just going to keep increasing in price scope. So you rightfully have this brought back to you. But again, we know there's a ton of restrictions on the property just for the open space that it is. And then it has all these physical constraints of geology and so forth, which it looks like you haven't even addressed yet by reading the report. The geology still needs to be done. So my view was maybe the geology was the first thing that needed to be done, see if it had hold up anything. But being that you did it the other way and that you've run out of the money and they now need to give out even more money if you want to keep going, enough is enough. I think you need to stop this swap. The taxpayers funding all of this and there's virtually little, if any, possibility for any ballfields going in there. Maybe something else, a dog park, but the amount of area and the space in the parking, it's, we know you're not stupid, but you do need to stop the bleeding financially. Use the money for some other more appropriate location to secure the land instead of just churning around this study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan and Una. I think that some of the concerns that you brought up, we're going to address those. And ask Riva to address some of those right now.
Sure. First of all, on the schedule, right now, the consultant has been in kind of a fact gathering process and staff needed to provide them with some additional information, which we're just about complete with doing. We're expecting the notice of preparation to be released sometime towards the end of January. And a scoping meeting will be held in February. We're finalizing that date right now with the consultant. So the public process will be, as we always do when we're doing an EIR, and we have not skipped any of those steps. The item before the council.
Say, if you could just give maybe just a brief summary of that EIR process, just so that the public's aware of that, how that'll take place with this project, with this EIR.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So once the notice of preparation is released, there will be a project information packet as well. The period for the notice of preparation review will start shortly thereafter, during which time we'll hold the scoping meeting. And after all of that information is collected and processed by the consultant, then the actual preparation of the draft EIR begins by the consultant. So when we say the staff, the consultant is working on it, it means that they're doing all the things to get ready to move forward to those steps. And then when the draft EIR is completed, there's another circulation period of 45 days during which time that the public has the opportunity to review it and make comments. And then after that, then we move forward with publishing it and finalizing it. So there's quite a few steps still to happen. It is a very complicated project and so we are doing it as precisely and methodically as necessary. The item before the council tonight is to extend the term of the agreement and to amend the agreement to make sure that we've included all of the tasks that the council asked for. We're not appropriating any new funds. Those funds were already appropriated and included in the budget. So just want to make sure that the council understands that. All we're doing is fixing the language of the agreement at this time for work that the council already approved.
Thank you, Riva. Lou, did you have any questions?
No, it's all pretty clear to me. Thanks.
Jefferson?
Continually, I mentioned earlier when I voted in opposition to move forward with the EIR, I predicted that we would be running into these situations and now they're coming forward. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda item.
I'll make a motion. I will second that. And just for discussion purposes, I did speak with Mayor Pro Tim Mullin about this and he voiced some concerns, which I think were sort of a little bit similar to Una's concerns about that and asked that Riva, you know, put that information out there so that the community knows that. And I just think that it's important for this community to know. I believe it's in the community's best interest for that park to belong to the city. And that's the, I don't know how to be more clear in that and supporting this EIR process that that's where my belief has been from the start and where it is now. I think that that's very important for our community, for that to stay in this community. Roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Motion carries.
And that concludes, 3B, that concludes the consent calendar?
3B13.
Sorry, 3B13. I was just making sure you were paying attention.
So on 3B13, we have been working with the County of Los Angeles to finalize some language on the grant agreement. And we do not have that final language tonight to present to the council. So what I would request is that the recommended action would be to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a grant agreement with the County of Los Angeles in a form approved by the city attorney's office for development of a strategic plan for homelessness. So it will give me the ability, once we get that all back, to move forward with the agreement as stated.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're not, we're not doing, we didn't pull 3B15, correct? I thought you said that you wanted to. Oh, okay. All right. We are now at 4A, which we're going to be continuing to the January 10th meeting. So do we need to do a roll call on that? No. And we are now at 3B, sorry, 4B.
Good evening again, everybody. Tonight, we are presenting an ordinance to regulate medical cannabis delivery and personal cultivation. You'll notice that in this version of the ordinance, we're using the term cannabis instead of marijuana to better fit with state regulations. As you know, there are two permitted medical cannabis dispensaries approved to operate in the city. In 2016, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance allowing dispensaries to deliver, to address and express need by those patients unable or too ill to travel to dispensaries. City council also directed staff to address personal cultivation for medical cannabis. When Proposition 64 passed last year, it set a date of January 1, 2018, to allow use of recreational cannabis in California. At this time, the state will also begin issuing licenses for cannabis delivery, cultivation, and other uses consistent with local ordinances. The subject ordinance is fairly basic and simply addresses medical cannabis delivery and personal cultivation in line with what is the minimum allowed or maximum allowed under state law. This will limit the types of licenses the state can issue in the city for the time being. Depending on council's direction, staff would return with a broader, more comprehensive ordinance in the coming months. The proposed ordinance allows for medical cannabis delivery in strict compliance with certain requirements. For example, two delivery permits would be allowed for each of the existing permitted dispensaries. These would be issued by the planning director once the dispensaries have demonstrated compliance with the ordinance requirements. There's a specific requirement that each dispensary must be in compliance with their existing CUP in order to obtain a delivery permit. There may be a need to amend a CUP depending on the, if there are any changes to this ordinance. The dispensary must maintain detailed records and they must comply with labeling of containers that are being transported during the delivery process. Also, there are some rules about who can actually do the deliveries. Drivers must be 21 and undergo background checks. Deliveries can only go to people that, the person receiving the delivery must be 21 years of age and registered with the dispensary. Deliveries can only be made to residences in the city or outside the city if the outside jurisdiction allows delivery. There are requirements that delivery vehicles be unmarked and that they contain secure lock boxes to transport the product. Delivery runs are also limited to occurring during the dispensary's normal operating hours. Also, just for clarity, the ordinance expressly prohibits commercial or recreational cannabis sales at this time. No other medical cannabis delivery is allowed and commercial cannabis activities would be prohibited in all zones in the city. Again, this is based on the direction we have specifically from council at this point and pending any further direction you provide tonight.
Is that it, Bonnie?
Sorry?
Keep going.
Okay. For personal cultivation, this would be limited to six plants maximum per person. It would have to be inside or in a structure in the rear of a yard. There could be no adverse effects on neighborhood residences and the idea is that there would be no evidence of the cultivation from public streets. In terms of the process we've gone through to develop the ordinance so far, we presented the ordinance in October to the zoning ordinance revisions and code enforcement Subcommittee of the City Council. The Subcommittee reviewed the ordinance and recommended exploring recreational distribution by the permitted dispensaries and allowing fairly extensive commercial cultivation across all zones in the city. And also, there was interest in taxation of recreational sales. As I mentioned, at this point, staff's recommendation is to get a basic ordinance in place by the end of the year and then get further direction from the full council about what you're, what you would like to do in terms of commercial and recreational cannabis regulations. The Planning Commission made some recommendations, as you saw in their resolution attached to your packet. They, the commission recommended that the council remove, or that staff remove, a lot of the specific delivery procedures that have been included in the original ordinance. They strengthened the requirement for background checks for drivers. And we also included their recommendations on fines and penalties. And then in terms of other changes that have been made to the ordinance since the Planning Commission, staff has included a $3,000 limit on cash and goods that would be allowed in a delivery vehicle at any one time. And then in order to incentivize people staying in compliance with the ordinance, if someone's delivery license were revoked, there would be a three-month delay after revocation before they could reapply for the delivery license. Those are types of things that council could recommend, something different if you felt that that was not an appropriate limit. We've received several items of correspondence. This is not very sensitive. There we go. There was correspondence from James Erickson calling for the city to address recreational use and allow more dispensaries. John Maza provided an editorial on the U.S. Attorney General's position on cannabis. And Nelson Hardeman, representing the 99 High Tide Collective, asked for temporary recreational licensing as opposed to a temporary ban on commercial sales, among other things. In closing, staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 428 to allow the medical delivery permits for the two existing dispensaries and to clarify the current ban on commercial cannabis sales and allow personal indoor cultivation so that clear limits are in place when, while the city considers other options. While staff received recommendations from Zerases, we're looking for a direction from the full council on any of these other items that you'd like to direct us to research and bring back to you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Bonnie. We have a number of public speakers tonight. I'm going to make a suggestion that we go to two minutes for those. And if people have additional speaker slips, they'll be allowed the additional time accordingly, a minute, up to six minutes. Probably like 20, 20, 30? I mean, let's, you want an hour and a half or one hour?
I'd rather do two and a half minutes instead of going, two minutes goes really, really fast.
Okay, two and a half minutes and then if you have, if you're.
And encourage people, if you're going to say the same thing that somebody's already said.
Just say like what they said.
Yeah, just say what they say. Obviously, if you have some new information for us or something, we really appreciate that, but thank you.
Ms. Rick, can I just throw in one more thing just to help? I know that there's some intense interest in recreational or adult-use cannabis and that is something that I know the council wants to address. We are here under this kind of unusual posture because of the state's end-of-year deadline. And so what the council's direction, what we've done is carved off the easy thing, which is the delivery and cultivation of medicinal cannabis. And that's what we're addressing tonight. The notice for tonight's meeting, the agenda itself, limits what it is that you can do tonight. And the agenda specifically says tonight we're addressing the medicinal cannabis. So you couldn't tonight take action to expand into, and I know staff is anxious to hear your comments on that and will take your direction to bring back a ordinance on recreational. Everybody should know that we are going to do that, that this is not, this, tonight is not the city banning recreational cannabis. Tonight is the city taking the action it has to take before the end of the year to just buy some time so we can come back with a thoughtful ordinance that does the trick.
Thank you for that, Christie. All right, we're going to start with.
That at nine o'clock, I have to leave. I have a flight out of town. And thank you.
That at nine o'clock, we're going to lose a quorum, that means, so that you may want to reassess how, whether or not to take this item, how much discussion to allow. If you take two and a half minutes per person, we won't be able to take action.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, so I'm glad you said that.
Thank you.
The next part of that is, and I was completely unaware of that, but you had to go for that. Could we push this to?
No.
To the meeting next week, next Wednesday, because I feel that we're not going to get there. I don't, I, I'm really sorry. I was unaware that Jefferson had to leave at nine and unless you guys want us each. Okay, so if you would like to.
Let's do it. Let's do it. So you know that we have an hour for discussion for all of this. So at least let's. So at least let's, why don't we hear from the people, and we can always...
I'm going to change it to one minute, okay? That's the only way it's going to work.
Well, we can hear from people, and then we can finish the item next week, too, if need be, right? Okay, but I think people did come and they've waited, so let's start to hear. How about two minutes? So at least we can...
Laura, just to be clear on that, if we start the item right now, we're not going to get to the point where we can have a conclusion due to time if we speak at two minutes. We don't have enough time, because Jefferson has to leave in one hour, and there's too many speaker slips here. So if we shorten that to one minute, then we can take action, or we can put this item off, or hear people that maybe couldn't make it here next week, they can go in the record, and we will be able to take action on it on Wednesday. So I just want to be fair and clear in that as to what the best process is for that. And Lou, I'm also curious to hear what your opinion is on that.
My opinion is, I agree with you, actually, because the bottom line is here, we don't have a full council there, because Rick's not there. And if we could all hear it together, I prefer that, and rushing it through tonight is not going to accomplish anything, I don't think.
Thank you, Lou. So I'm going to, I'm just going to make the suggestion, I don't not think that we should hear this item right now, because we're not going to have enough time. It's just...
You still have a quorum.
We, I know that we have a quorum right now, but there's no way for us to go through all of this public comment, and I don't want to be eating up time right now, but if it takes us five minutes to figure out how we're going to handle it, that's fine.
Let's hear the people that are here.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start with public comment, and then we're going to basically be ending the meeting, because we're not going to have a quorum.
Well, we have to, we have a couple of other agenda items. How important are they for tonight? We have the earthquake, the development block grant. Do we have to do that tonight? So why don't we just do forty-five minutes of public comment, then continue it, and then do the block grant? Is that okay, Riva?
Yeah, we noticed the item, and so we do need to hear it in order to accept those funds.
Okay. The, you're talking about for C?
For C.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got forty-five minutes to finish this item, and we have fifteen minutes of that item, to be clear.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so we're going to go ahead and start with public comment. I'm going to limit public comment at this time to a minute and a half, and when you start, it's the only way that the time's going to work. So if you have more time to speak, you will be allowed those additional minutes, because I have a feeling that some people may be giving minutes to other people, and we'll go ahead and give you that time. And we're going to have to complete this in the next forty-five minutes. So it's eight o'clock right now, and we'll have forty-five, about, probably about thirty-five minutes to get through public comment, and about ten minutes of listening to us babble till we can get to a conclusion for this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and start with William McNamara, and if you hear your name, please come and sit in the front row, because that's going to help us save time. So William McNamara, followed by Solvee McKenna, followed by Mikey Pearson, followed by James Erickson.
Just to be clear, is this not about the dispensaries, then? This is about just harvesting your own medical marijuana?
No.
Yes, the ordinance...
And delivery.
The ordinance is about delivery and cultivation of medicinal marijuana. We're going to deal with recreational in January or February.
Okay. Okay. Be very quick. So I personally don't use medical marijuana or any drugs at all, so it's a bizarre situation that I'm here. However, my dog was put on medical marijuana by my veterinarian because she's unable to tolerate pharmaceutical drugs. The CBD oils that you buy at, like Vitamin Barn, you look on the FDA website, ninety-nine percent have no CBD in them. My dog also needs the THC, so the combination's medical marijuana. The only place, I live in Santa Monica, and the only place I feel comfortable coming to, because I don't use any drugs at all, is the Malibu dispensary. It's safe, it's clean, the people are fantastic. I've been on the west side for thirty years, I trust them. So for me, it's a really important issue, that at least the dispensaries are here and remained open for my pet. The other thing is, you know, just as far as resisting Trump's attack on small businesses, I think it's important to stand against that and support small businesses, as well as resisting Donald Trump's Attorney General. I think it's important that the United States, every single city, county in the United States send a message to Sessions that he, you know, I have friends who are Republicans in Ohio and Arizona that voted for Trump, and as soon as Sessions did this, they've left, so you guys, medical marijuana or recreational marijuana might put an end to Trump. So please don't support Donald Trump. Thank you.
Solvee, followed by Mikey Pearson, followed by James Erickson, followed by Sage Hill. Is Solvee not here? Okay, Mikey Pearson, followed by James Erickson, followed by Sage Hill.
Hi, y'all. Thank you. I think my points are a bit mute, but I think, as a city, we've done a really poor job at dealing with getting through this marijuana regulations. I mean, clearly, the voters have voted to allow recreational marijuana. We had a deadline, and we're not meeting it, and it has consequences. So by not approving recreational marijuana at this time, a few things are going to happen. People from outside are going to be bringing marijuana into the city, because they are approved and we're not. So we have really strict standards on two businesses that are already in the city, and we're not using those resources, businesses that have proven themselves an asset to the community. Also, we're leaving open basic street drug dealing. The whole reason this was started, or one of the main reasons, is to stop that, is to regulate it. By not approving this, we're just leaving that door just not in a good position for the city. So, time is so short, it's really hard to encapsulate it that quickly, but I, there is a waiting list that you have to get on through the state, and we're allowing our two businesses here, which my feeling is, we have two people already, our two businesses already signed up, we should at least start with them. They're going to miss signing up to get state-registered, because we did not take action soon enough, as far as I understand it, and that, I just think we're just missing the boat, and we're not really following what the electorate asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey James, followed by Sage Hill, followed by Don Schmitz.
Evening, council. Thank you, Lou, for doing the heavy lifting in Washington. I'm here this evening as an advocate. I'm not representing any business interests. In our city, we have to step up and face the new realities of the new law and social norms in California regarding cannabis. I think the first thing we should consider is dedicating all city funds derived from cannabis to education and awareness education in our elementary and high schools of drugs and internet and all kinds, alcohol, tobacco, across the board. It's the, really, the only answer to our concerns, it will, if we want to approach them. Next is, like justice, access delayed is access denied. And the majority of our population lives on the west end, lives above Paradise Cove, and our law bans dispensaries from up there. It forces our citizens to drive through our traffic. That's against everything we work for to mitigate traffic. It limits our choices, and it raises the cost dramatically to only have two dispensaries. It's briefly, it's onerous and unfair to our citizens, and please, think about amending the ordinance to allow dispensaries in the west end as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Sage here? No? Don? Don's followed by Ryan Embry, followed by Alexander Williams.
Councilmember Don Schmitz, following strictly the confines of the hearing established by the city attorney, would like to speak to the resolution that's been drafted. I want to thank your staff and the direction you're going. I do have a concern on B two and three, as it pertains to the medical cannabis dispensaries, and their privacy concern. B two says that the planning director, planning directors designated shall be allowed reasonable access to review the records. That makes me nervous. What makes me very nervous is that the planning director can then send a planner, a designee, to go on a ride-along for the delivery from the medical cannabis dispensaries to the patients. I think we run afoul of some HIPAA concerns in regards to that and some privacy concerns. We're right on board with you in regards to this needing to be tightly regulated. We realize it's anarchy out there. We have people from outside of our community that are making deliveries. That's a problem. But you have established facilities here in this town, and they should be treated a little bit differently. We think that they should be licensed by the city, because they are bona fide operators, and so those two dispensaries should have licenses from the city. And although I understand you didn't want to open up Pandora's Box tonight as it pertained to general cultivation within the community, I do think that you should allow cultivation on a confined basis, as recommended by Zeracy's, for the two medical cannabis dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Ryan Embry, followed by Alexander Williams, followed by Jennifer Coffin. Again, if I say your name, please come in the, in the front row. Okay, Ryan's not here. Alexander Williams?
Yeah.
And Alex, you're followed by Jennifer Coffin, followed by Zajal Zol.
Good evening, Mayor Peak, and esteemed planning commission and city council members. I just wanted to start off by saying, you know, putting a prayer out there for all the people with the fires and all of our friends and community firemen who have been helping with that. I wanted to start off by saying, having been raised here in Malibu in a family that's been deeply involved in the community for many years, and having been here in many of these city council meetings, I feel like I've really had an opportunity to kind of get a feel for what I thought was important and what, what kind of rests at the foundation of Malibu, and that's always really been taking care of its community and its local businesses, and not really opening itself or making itself susceptible to these outside energies. And over the last few years, you guys have really, you know, had a diligent process of vetting and, you know, finding the right operators for these different medical marijuana facilities here in, here in Malibu, and I think that you guys would be doing yourselves a really huge disservice to, you know, not allow the taxable income and the revenue that could be supporting our schools, our parks, these programs, you know, like other people have said, and not following suit, kind of stuck in a path that doesn't really serve us when very clearly what's happening all along the west coast and all these other cities and all these other states, we're seeing the potential that this has to help people, and it would only make sense that you would allow these dispensaries, at the very least, to be able to cultivate. I actually did not know that you could take, you know, that one to six, I thought that was a right that was actually given to people and...
It is.
For, yeah, for medical, it's a right, so, you know, the dispensaries actually have the right to do that for their patients.
Thank you, Alex. Is Jennifer there? Jennifer, followed by Zajal, followed by Erin.
Good evening, council members, everyone. My name is Jennifer Coffin. I am a manager at the Ninety-Nine High Tide, and I implore everyone in this room to really keep in mind that the people who are looking for delivery really need delivery. Many of them can't really leave their homes, many of them can't walk, can't drive themselves anywhere, and so by adding restrictions to the delivery services that already are mandated by the state is really unnecessary. They already are in existence and are made to uphold the laws and the needs of the state. I wish we can follow suit with that. We, on a daily basis, help so many different people to overcome opiate addictions, prescription drug addictions, helping them to clear their brains and to, you know, find their zen and to really help ground them and to become better members of our community by helping them not only with their health, but with just their families, and really, it just runs down the, their tree. It affects their children and it affects their homes and their everyday lives, and so we're here to help support the community and do everything that we can to help heal our community members and to offer them high-quality, high-grade medicine. So please, I ask that you make it very accessible, especially to those who need delivery. Thank you so much, and any remaining time I have, I'd like to forfeit that to you on green. Thank you.
Thank you, Zajal. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correct, so...
It's all right, I'm Dejol.
I was pretty close.
So I really don't understand why there are so many rules against this medicine. It's completely natural, okay? There's THC in your bones, there's THCA in your brain, and there's CBD in your mother's breast milk, and I think it should be completely legal everywhere, and there shouldn't be so many rules against it. I mean, it's legal to grow wine and make wine, and all this other alcoholic beverages could be sold here, and, you know, we're adults, we should be able to make choices and, and buy what we want and do what we want whenever we want, right? Especially if it's good for you. So I've seen many people heal, come out of wheelchairs, come off of heroin addiction. I've seen hundreds of cases. This is a ninety-eight percent success rate, and we shouldn't be treated like this. We're healing people, you know? This is, this is seriously, like, a beautiful thing for our country.
Amen to that. Erin? Yes. Sorry, that was hard for me to read that. And Erin, you're followed by Darrell Cambick, followed by Chris Burkholder.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council. My name is Erin Lashant. I'm counsel for the Ninety-Nine High Tide. As an initial matter, I want to thank you all for letting me be here and to speak. I echo Mike Pearson's concerns about the voting mandate, that the voters in Malibu and Los Angeles County have voted in Prop sixty-four, and it's important, because ten years ago, Malibu took the bold move to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries, and you're called at it again. What I'm asking for, on behalf of the Ninety-Nine, is that while the city attorney puts together a regulatory effort and explores the different options, the city council grant the two existing dispensaries a temporary authorization to pursue temporary state licensure for adults, for adult-use sales. The two big reasons for it are, number one, by putting it in place, Malibu is eligible to receive taxation from the state, collected from the marijuana excise taxes. If there's a temporary ban in place, or any type of ban on adult-use sales, Malibu's ineligible for those taxes. And number two, the world around Malibu is changing, and it's going to put these two businesses at a competitive disadvantage. Los Angeles is beginning adult-use sales Jan. one. West Hollywood's beginning adult-use sales Jan. one. Unincorporated LA County is picking up this summer. So be bold, be Malibu, authorize temporary adult-use sales for the two licensed dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Darrell? Darrell, you're followed by Chris Bulker, then followed by Melody Beany.
Yes, I'm a Vietnam vet and have been using cannabis probably for the past couple of years. I was on medication, prescription medication, which really didn't help at all, and all I want to say is, please don't, don't shut this thing down. It really helps me out, you know? And I'm sure it helps out a lot of other people.
Thank you. Chris? And Chris, you're followed by Melody, and then Tamir.
I'd like to start by echoing the sentiment of the gentleman that just talked. I spent the last two years traveling around Southern California, observing the cannabis industry and seeing the great deal of good that this medicine can actually do. The only problem is that because of the medicinal laws, it makes it a bit tougher to get access. With recreation, you can walk in as an alcohol store if you're twenty-one, and you can have access to this medicine. The problem is, is that the rest of LA is going to have adult use, and people in Malibu, whether they're the tourists that come and visit here all the time, or the people that live here, will be able to drive down the street to some of the other areas of LA or over the hill, and they'll be able to give those areas the tax dollars that you guys are going to be missing out on. Basically, two hundred and forty million tourists a year visit California. Obviously, not all of them come to Malibu, but a fair amount do, and it just seems like a shame to miss out on that kind of money, when you guys could be taking advantage of that and funding your schools and your parks and your beaches and all of that. So I guess, if I were you guys, I would just want to be a part of history. California's always been on the forefront. Malibu has been on the forefront of California. You know, it's time to go ahead and get this moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like we want pot now. Melody? And you're followed by Tamir, followed by Vanessa.
Hi. This is the fourth cannabis city council meeting I've attended, and in three of them, including this one, I've seen a great degree of thoughtfulness and consideration as you break ground, and as we learn, as a state, how to harness the incredible healing powers of nature, including cannabis, for healing and the good of all mankind. And that's a very important issue now. I specifically am here to talk about medical delivery. I'm one of the people, I wandered into High Tide Ninety-Nine, Ninety-Nine High Tide on January seventeenth. At that time, I, as a result of a failed back surgery and then a secondary inflammation of my entire spine, I'd been told I would have to be on fentanyl for the rest of my life, and I had been on it for twelve years, and that I would die, and there was no hope. I walked into High Tide. I was hooked up with a medical grower who is treating serious illnesses. If we are denied the ability to have delivery, it will not only seriously... If we are denied the ability to have delivery, it will not only seriously impact us, it will impact the rest of the community. Many of us are on extremely high doses. I choose not to drive. We're all breaking new ground with this. And I'm here to encourage the city council to be bold and to set an example for the rest of the world in thoughtfully creating regulations that allow us to be part of this great movement. The world will be looking to Malibu. The world will be looking to California. We're perhaps one of the most well-known cities in the world.
Thank you.
And I applaud what you're doing.
Thank you. Tamir? And Tamir, you're followed by Vanessa, then followed by DeShawn.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and esteemed council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Tamir Elshacks. I'm a best practices consultant for medical marijuana dispensaries, including the 99 High Tide here in Malibu. In November of 2016, the people of California voted for a ballot measure that allows for recreational sales of marijuana in the state of California. I did not vote for this ballot measure because it does not support and protect medical marijuana. Unfortunately, this ballot measure only supports and protects adult recreational use. And one attorney told me that his interpretation is that medical use will be phased out. Medical marijuana use should be protected and supported. It's greatly beneficial to a wide variety of people around California and here in Malibu. The proponents of the ballot measure, as well as the state, are not concerned at this time with protecting medical marijuana patients, but now seem only to be interested in adult recreational use and the new taxes it will generate. Some states, like Colorado, do not charge taxes, sales or excise tax on medical marijuana sales. They do heavily tax recreational use, which has created a surplus in the educational budget in Colorado. California has not gone that way. When the state opens for recreational use January 1st, medical marijuana will be subject to an additional 15% state excise tax. We should not be subject to this tax, but we are. We should not be subject to sales tax because it is medicine, but we are. These new taxes are based on the idea that additional recreational sales will justify it. If the city of Malibu does not allow our dispensaries to be included for adult sales right away, temporarily, your dispensaries will be taxed out of business in January.
Tamir, thank you. Vanessa? Vanessa, you're followed, you can go like this instead of clapping. That way everyone can see you. Vanessa, you're followed by DeShawn and then Yvonne Green and Sam Boyer.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'd like to echo what Tamir was saying. We have created an amazing system here in Malibu with medical marijuana. And I applaud all of you for everything you've done for this beautiful city and the council members that are not here. As Tamir said, we have these incredible challenges because the state is moving forward with Prop 64 and medical marijuana is being pushed out. We're being asked as a city to adopt the state's recommendations and the citizens have voted for that, so that's really clear. The state is giving the dispensaries a temporary permit. So in four months, they will review and say, okay, we've had four months to come up with our solid recommendations or restrictions. And that's what the council in Malibu could do as well. Give us a temporary status of adult use cannabis. We could only serve 21 and up citizens of our of our city. If there's a ban placed on January 1st, for January 1st, we will not be qualified for the state-issued generated taxes. We will lose our tax revenue in Malibu. That would be really sad to see. West Hollywood and LA have moved forward with this temporary four-month status and then will review and can go from there. So I urge that we do the same.
Thank you. DeShawn?
I want to give my time to Sam.
All right. Yvonne?
I was going to get a minute from Carl. He's one of the speakers.
Go ahead, you have two and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor, city council. I'm Yvonne Green, the founder of the 99 High Tide. And I know our time is limited, so I'm just going to get really quickly into this. You know, I think it's important, you guys don't, you know, see us on a regular basis. And I want to share that in the two and a half years that we've been open, we've been voted the number one dispensary in all of California by medicalmarijuana.uk, who visited all the dispensaries they could in California, like thousands, and chose us as the number one. And I'll tell you why I'm mentioning this. I was also chosen as Cannabis Businesswoman of the Year by Industry Power Women, who chose women who had cannabis businesses that exemplified higher standards and changing the industry for the better and for being philanthropic. And I mention all that because all of that's going to go away if we're not allowed to compete. If we're not given a temporary permit to apply to the state, it's open now, the applications are open now. If the city, if you guys aren't, if you don't allow us, we won't be able to apply. And and everyone around us, LA, West Hollywood, they're getting their temporary right to adult use. And so nobody's going to go through the trouble of going to get a doctor's rec, of paying for it, of signing up 15, 20 minutes at a dispensary when they can just get delivery from a recreational establishment or they can go to one and just show their ID and they're in and out in five minutes. I always know how much you guys are concerned about parking, so adult use would actually limit parking. It would be quicker. People could come in and out. They don't have to sit there and fill out their forms anymore. But mostly, I just, I want to ask for your help. I feel we, this is our city. I was I was raised here. I love this city. Everybody that works for us is from Malibu and loves Malibu. And we're just asking you guys to help us, to help us stay afloat, to help us compete and not let another small business close down in Malibu, you know? Thank you.
Thanks, Yvonne. Sam, and Sam, you have two and a half minutes. The time is ticking.
Hi. Hi, Skylar Jefferson, Laura, how's everybody doing? I wanted to start talk off, talk on the delivery issue. I think we did a really good job at the planning department getting the delivery ordinance worked out. And I really appreciate everybody working with us and taking our input into that. There was two issues I wanted to talk about with the delivery ordinance that I think we didn't get to. The first one is having somebody have to come in first for delivery and then you'd be a patient who actually have to come into the shop first. I think that puts us at a disadvantage with everybody else who's operating on the black market and also other delivery services where you don't have to come into a shop. The idea is to make it as easy and accessible for everybody as we can. Am I telling somebody how to come in first to get delivery? It really limits us and makes this much more difficult. The second one was the number of licenses. I think it's important that we have, you can have more than two licenses. I think if there's a need for more than two drivers, you know, whether we're busy or there's, Malibu's really far spread apart, if we need to have three drivers out at a time, I think we should be, have as many as we need to operate a good business, not be limited to just two delivery licenses. I wanted to move on to recreational adult use and why it's so important. Everybody's talking about how it's a competitive disadvantage. What I handed out to you was a study done by the state of California, which says that the medical market, once recreational adult use comes to California, if you look on page two of that, it says the medical market is going to is going to decrease by 75%. So that means our business has a potential of decreasing by 75% with adult recreational use coming around us. So it really is critical to the survival of our business to have recreational use. And to be able to apply for that now and be able to apply for that on a temporary basis, I think is very important to our business and to the community. And it helps us to continue to provide for our medical patients who really need it. If if we're not able to give out some free medicine or give donated medicine to people because we're struggling to survive, it's really going to hurt the people who are already really need the medicine from us. So I want to thank you very much for taking that into consideration and thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. One would think that on an evening when we had the cannabis topic in front of us, we would have a little bit more time. However, we have 15 minutes. So Laura, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, everyone, for coming and sorry we had to change the time. It was not something any of us knew about beforehand. I just wanted to deal with a couple of inaccuracies out there. I don't know where the idea came that we were going to be shutting down the two dispensaries that we have now. That was not anywhere in our ideas or anywhere in our agenda item. So that's the first thing. The second thing is we do not ban West End dispensaries. There just aren't any in the West End, but we do not ban them at all. There could be one at Tranqus, there could be one at Point Dume, but there aren't any. So we don't ban them. They're just, we only allowed two. Nobody ever came forward with any ideas for anything on the West Side. And then there is no, there will be no excise tax on medical marijuana. It will only be on recreational marijuana. And they will, it will not be on medical because we do not put excise taxes on drugs. So I did, I did want to clear that up and that is part of Prop 64, too, and that...
Hold on, Laura. I see you guys throwing your hands in the air about that and I would like your attorney to...
It's not going to be, not for medical marijuana. Well, that's not what I've been told and I've gone to three or four different ones. Okay, so we'll leave that on the table. And I actually just read another thing on it today. But I did want you to know that there's a 15% excise tax on recreational. They'll, we have another, what's our sales tax now, like 10% or something?
Nine and a quarter.
Nine and a half. The city of Malibu gets 1% of our sales tax. So we're not getting hundreds of thousands of dollars, at least, I hope we're not going to be selling a billion dollars' worth of marijuana in the city. So it's, unless we vote and the residents vote to add an additional tax, which I can't imagine that we're going to because the state put so much tax on it, it's going to be difficult. So I just wanted to put those out there before we started any kind of discussion. And let me ask Christie a couple of things I've already asked her. Can we give them a temporary, I'm trying to look where I wrote this down. So if we, if we don't ban, if we're not banning recreational, which is the right of any city, but if we, if we're not doing that before January 1st, we're not banning it, but we're also not able to say yes to it because we didn't have it on our agenda, does that mean then that they cannot apply for this license to sell the marijuana? Or can we give them a temporary or whatever it is?
All right, so there's no such thing as a temporary permit. And as you know from regulation, it's always easier to give additional rights than it is to give rights and then take them away. Because when you give especially business rights to someone, they start to vest as soon as they start operating under it. And so it's not the same thing as taken away. So that's the first thing. You are, in essence, not allowing commercial cannabis, recreational, adult use, whatever activity in Malibu until you, you're freezing it, you're saying no tonight, under this ordinance, until next, early next year, when you take on the big picture. And let me just give you an example. So right now, I mean, I think everybody can pretty much, any thinking person will pretty much agree that the state regulations on marijuana, especially the kind of recreational versus medicinal, have been confusing and at cross purposes and have created all kinds of problems. And one of the things that you're, the themes you're hearing tonight is that our local businesses are feeling a business threat, even though they were founded on this idea that they were providing a specific service to a collective group of patients who had recommendations and could live within these parameters. Now we're looking at a world where, you know, opened up to recreational, if you could just go to amazon.com or Walgreens, then maybe you don't need to be in this highly regulated collective environment. So we have this, these strange two laws. We have, because of the way it came to the city through the medicinal allowance under the Compassionate Care Act, we developed our regulations under the land use world. And that has its limitations. And it, it's worth a serious conversation among the council about whether that's the best way to do it or whether you could approach it as a business license. That also has ramifications.
I would urge us to come back with a business license and its related ordinance in the first quarter of next year.
Right, and that's, but that's not, but that's not something we can do tonight. And loosening up tonight is going to set us up for having to have given rights and then take them away. So I understand, I understand the excitement for getting it done right. I think under, if the state hadn't had this artificial deadline, we wouldn't be here tonight. We would just be back here in January or February, having the real conversation and doing the whole thing. But this is, again, as I say, this is the stopgap for the moment to give us the chance to do what it is that you ultimately want to do.
I would just respond to that by saying, I think that the council takes the voters very seriously and the voters of this state very clearly said, we want recreational sales to happen. And they also very clearly said that in our community. So I think that everyone that sits on the council is very much clear about that. It's our method of how we get there. I think if you look at back in history and you go back to prohibition, there was probably a lot of these conversations that happened when they started to allow people to sell alcohol. And it was not but a few years into that when that process was much more refined. And I guess one would say now you can find liquor on every street corner. You know, you could probably find marijuana on every street corner, but it just might not be done through the legal means. So our goal would be to get it to a place where that can be provided in the legal world. And I think that Christie is very clear tonight on what she said and I hope that the public's very clear on that, that this council intends to be having a discussion that surrounds that recreational aspect of it in the first quarter of the coming year. Apologize for that not happening sooner. That's, I mean, not short of it, but that's the reality. So with that and this interim period and allowing medical sales, that's sort of where we're at and what we're discussing. So I was going to go into outer space here and talk to Lou. Lou, are you there?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
And see if you had any comments or if you wanted to hear from us first.
Well, I'll give you some comments. Basically, my favorite part of this ordinance is the part where we're banning all the rest of commercial...
Lou, you got to speak into the microphone, we couldn't hear you. Lou, Doug. Houston, we have a problem? Okay, I think we'll, Lou, if you can call back in, I don't know if we lost you or not?
I don't think we lost him.
Maybe we pressed mute. Why don't you go ahead, Laura?
Thank you. Hopefully Lou can opine as soon as possible.
You can't, we closed public comment, I apologize.
Thank you. I'll be brief. About six, eight months ago, I had reached out to the owners of 99 High Tide and, and mentioned to their manager and to them that they needed to get this process moving. And I was alarmed by the fact that, why should I have to come to them and say, let's move this, you know, let's promote this? And they won't deny it that I did have the meeting with the manager many, many months ago. Sorry about that. I guess I should have been more vociferous. I want to just also say that I had a meeting today with Don Schmitz for about five minutes on taxation and I learned nothing new. And I have been following my educational process through documents like this, which I think are provided to everybody who wants them. You can read them online. For clarification, I think it helps everybody educate yourself and it's not that hard to get to.
Why don't you give the public the URL of that document? So that's www... So that's www.bcc.ca.gov, which is the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which is a new state agency that's been formed in California to deal with the regulation of cannabis sales in this state. So that's what Jefferson was referring to.
Thank you, Skylar, and that's the end of my comments. Hopefully Lou's back.
All right, Lou? Lou? Do you have mute on? No? Okay. Laura?
I am disappointed that we're not talking about recreational, but there's not much that I can do about that. I do support allowing for deliveries, and I really would support, and I know we're not supposed to do this because the planning department is so overwhelmed, but I would really support getting this, something back in January so that we can make this happen because I think it does put our local businesses at a disadvantage. I know that there is a queue to get these, to be able to get online to get these permits, and you have to, obviously, not every city is going to be allowing recreational marijuana sales. So I know West Hollywood and LA are doing it, but, you know, the ones closest to us, like Agora and Calabasas and Santa Monica, I didn't hear their names, so I'm not exactly sure where they are in this either. So, and also just as a little, after the election, you can look up, like literally neighborhood by neighborhood to see how they voted, and I looked up, the great majority of neighborhoods in Malibu, and the percentage of people that voted yes on Prop 64 were in the 70s and 80s. So this is something that, obviously, we support. I do, I did have, took to heart what Don did. I had talked about this with him, about the HIPAA issues, Bonnie, about the delivery and about allowing somebody to ride along and see who's getting the delivery. So I think maybe we can get some input on that from some of the other, either cities that are looking at that or some of the experts on HIPAA law. I'm not sure if you're an expert on HIPAA law. No, these are for people to deliver.
Right. Yeah, it would be, it would be helpful to know if there's a specific part of HIPAA because it's so extensive.
Yeah.
That we could zero in on. So if you can provide that, that would be helpful.
And then, so I do, I think some of these things are a little restrictive, but I don't think that we have time to really get into it tonight. We'll have to talk about it next week. And I just really encourage us to get this other ordinance quickly if we can't do anything temporarily.
I'm back when you need me.
All right, Lou, go ahead with your comments.
All right. I've heard pretty much what all of you said, and I respectfully disagree. My favorite part of this ordinance is where we have the ability to ban commercial marijuana. And I just think the healing powers of marijuana or cannabis are available at the two dispensaries we have now, and I think they're doing a fine job doing it. I don't think it's necessary to get into the delivery part of it. I think that the windfall, the financial windfall everybody keeps talking about is going to go to the cannabis growers and manufacturers and not necessarily the cities or state. So my feeling is I would continue the ban that we've got there, but I know how to count, and let's see what happens.
All right. Thank you. Kristi, a couple of questions for you. So just in regards to this ordinance sort of and how it's worded right now, I think that, you know, I definitely had a couple of concerns about the HIPAA laws. That was, I had a brief conversation with Don today. That was not something that I was thinking about at first, so I'd like that to be a little bit clarified and that, I don't know, Bonnie?
Bonnie's in a better position to talk about the ordinance.
It seems like having somebody do a ride-along doesn't probably seem like the way to go about it to me, but...
That's, I can just tell you that part of the reason that was included on the front end is when the original draft of the ordinance was prepared, it had a lot more restrictions on what routes the drivers could take, how many runs they could do, and things like that. And without those provisions included, you could, there's less need for the ride-along part, so you could strike that if that's a concern.
What happened to the electric vehicle requirement?
That, that was one of the things that we would bring back with a future ordinance, but it's not part of this draft.
Okay. I would just like to, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve this right now, and why can't we?
I think that we need, there's all these different parts of it, and I think that we need to just bring back next week and finish the discussion.
But can we do, can we do that or no? I was unclear. I thought that we couldn't do that.
From the people that came tonight and might not be able to keep...
The public that are here.
So we can close the public comment part of it, correct? And just hear our deliberations next week, right? So then, so at least then we'll have all five of us hopefully, and we, we close public comment, but we get to hear, but we get to deliberate, because there's more things that I'd like us to say.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and continue this to January, no, sorry, December 20th at 6:30 PM. Okay. Now at item, thank you all very much for coming this evening, and again, that meeting will be next Wednesday, December 20th, in this room, starting at 6:30. We're now at item 4C, which is the use of CDBG funds for earthquake preparedness. Lisa?
Good evening. I will make this brief and answer any questions if you have them. As you know, our community development block grant funds are very limited in the things that we can spend them on. We get only about $46,000 a year, and the bulk of that money has to be spent on capital projects. We have a one-time opportunity to spend it on something other than that, and in brainstorming with the county department, came up with this idea, which fits well into our plans for the new year. Susan Duñez has a plan to make 2018 our year of earthquake resiliency. And in fact, this suggestion to buy earthquake emergency kits for our senior population came from this, the county, and so we thought it was a great idea, and we've put it forward, and so we're hoping you will approve the expenditure of this money on earthquake resiliency kits.
I think it's a great idea. I thank you for being creative, Susan, and Lisa, and everybody, and I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I would like to second.
Lou, did you have any comment?
No, I agree. I think it's a great idea.
All right, roll call.
What's considered a senior again? How old?
Anybody 55 or over.
Yes, okay.
That's more than, that's more than 50% of the Malibu population. We're really looking out for you guys out there. Sorry, I'm not eligible.
You'll be there soon enough.
Thank you for reminding me, Lou. Kelsey, roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes, and I hope that nobody ever has to use them.
Motion carries.
I am going to make a motion to appoint Veronica Harrington, also known as Big V, to the Arts Commission.
Excellent choice, Mayor Peak.
Thank you, Laura. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting to 5:00 PM on Wednesday, December 20th, for the closed session, to be, for the closed session and to be followed by a 6:30 PM open meeting where we'll consider to join the CCA and as well as continue the cannabis item that was discussed previously this evening.
And did you mean Veronica Brady?
Brady Harrington, yes. Veronica Brady, sorry.
I'll second that.
Roll call? Do I have to do a roll call for that? No, I do. Yeah, for the, for the, yeah. We do. I said that, he seconded it.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Be safe.
Thank you all. Good night.